Good evening. We're at the Mendon Select Board Meeting, September 12th, 2022. And this evening with us, for Select Board members, myself, Larry Crissell, and Val Taylor to my right, and we have a guest, Megan Smith, who will be talking about the proposed plans for a community center. It is 5:00 PM, and the first item on our agenda is to add or delete any items to the agenda. So adding to the agenda, we need to sign the VCJC Constable Duties and Responsibility, and also sign the Vermont Town Forest Fire Form, Forest Fire Warden Form. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition to those two, and the VCJC signing will be E on number six under Business, and F will be the Vermont Town Forest Fire Warden. Motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. The first one is the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that we've been working on for a while, and we're close to wrapping that up. The team working on it has one more meeting, which is actually tomorrow in the afternoon at 2:30. And just so people know what this is, Ryan Gates has joined the meeting for the minutes. The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan is coming down the home stretch. The timeline has the LHMP Committee presenting the current draft at the November 7th Planning Commission Meeting, and opening the second public comment period for public input until the Select Board meeting on November 28th. That's 2022. The final draft is planned to be approved by the town and submitted to Vermont Emergency Management by mid-December, and we'll be looking for FEMA to approve it January 2023. The committee has come up with a list of what we feel are the top three hazards, and looking at our plan from five years ago, we're pretty much on the same thing. The top three were flash flooding and fluvial erosion associated with thunder, tropical storms and ice jams. Second one was extreme cold, snow and ice associated with winter storms. And the third was high winds associated with thunder, tropical, and winter storms. There was one other piece that caught our attention, and it was about the aging of the population. So for years, under Rutland Regional Planning Commission and other boards I've been on, we've been talking about the aging of the population in Vermont, kind of with the exception of Chittenden County, and the issue of youth retention in the state. And so when we got our statistics for Mendon, it caught our attention a little bit more. Between 2010 and 2020, the median age of Mendon residents increased from 49.2 to 52.6, higher than the Vermont median age of 42.8. The portion of the population over 65 is 23.6% compared to 19% in Vermont and 16% in the county. The population density of the town is 30 people per square mile compared to an overall state density of 68. That was, you know, did catch our attention. Our agenda for tomorrow, again, is September 30th, 2022, 2:30 PM. Project Administration, we need to get everyone on board to send in their in-kind hours for tracking. Section Six, Hazard Mitigation Strategy, Review Mitigation Actions, Evaluation and Prioritization. B, Identify Mitigation Actions for Implementation. C, Define Process for Incorporating Plan Requirements into Other Planning Mechanisms. Number Three, Section Seven, Finalize Process for Maintaining Plan. Section Four, Planning Process Review Changes Since the 2017 Plan. And Section Five, Next Steps Schedule. A, Remaining Input Due September 27th. B, Issue Final Draft for Planning Team Approval, October 3rd. C, Planning Team Approval Due October 17th. D, Submit Final Draft to SARAH, is November 1st. E, Share Draft with Local Officials at the November 7th Planning Commission Meeting. F, Public Comment Period, November 7th to November 28th. And G, Incorporate All Comments Into Final Draft. H, Submit Final Draft to the VEM for Preliminary Approval for Early December. Also, September is National Preparedness Month. It's an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters. The Federal Emergency Management Agency has a National Preparedness Month social media toolkit which can assist a town in promoting preparedness throughout your communities. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns Town Fair is Thursday and Friday, October 6th and 7th. That will take place in Killington. Probably towards the end of October, we will be starting our budget cycle, which pretty much takes up our time right through to December. And the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Municipal Budgeting and Capital Planning Webinar is Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, at 9:30 AM, and again, that's a webinar. All right, Administrative Matters, we're down to number four. We have a Signing of Orders. I'll make a motion to approve the orders for September 8th, 2022, for $2,790.50 and $40,916.93, and a payroll for September 3rd, 2022, of $10,330.42. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. B, we have the minutes. The first one is August 8th, 2022. Select Board Members Present were myself and Brian Sell. These probably will go in the state they're in now because we need two of us to sign these minutes, and Brian Sell is not here. The next set of minutes is August 29th, 2022, and we need a correction, and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 29th, 2022, and at the members present, remove Brian Sell and put in Val Taylor. Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are at number five, Public Comment, and you're doing a presentation. We have two members of Public Comment, so let me get started.
Should we take a quote?
No, she's doing a presentation. It's further, further down the agenda.
So at the last meeting, I asked you about zoning, and you told me you didn't have anything to do with zoning.
Yep.
You didn't micromanage zoning. But on April 12th, 2021, the Select Board decided to, that they can serve violations by the law.
So April...
So I think that's, I think that's pretty unfair as can. It either should be shall, or it should be no.
I can tell you what happened.
If it says shall, that means everybody. When it says can, that means you can pick and choose who you feel like doing that to. I also looked into, I'm the only one that ever had that happen. I want to know why. I want to know the reasons, and who wrote any, anything about why I was to be served by the sheriff and the constable. It seems like I'm getting singled out. You told me you didn't have anything to do with it, but you contradicted yourself right there.
So April 12th?
Yep, 2021.
Correct.
Those are the minutes right there.
Zoning Violations and Use of the Town Office. S. Cosgrove, he is a former zoning administrator, he is deceased.
Yep.
He attended the Select Board Meeting and provided an update on two zoning violations. The Select Board addressed, I don't need a yep, I'll just continue talking.
It's public comment, I'm going to talk.
No, it's my turn.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you read some of them.
Let me, let me finish. I'm reading the minutes.
Good, so, okay.
The Select Board addressed direction in both cases. The Select Board clarified the zoning administrator should carry out his duties to conduct an onsite site inspection accompanied by P. Douglas, Constable. COVID-19 safety protocol must be followed by wearing a mask when in the presence of others. The Select Board also confirmed the service of the notice of zoning violation can be served by P. Douglas, Constable, accompanied by a Rutland County Sheriff at their request. S. Cosgrove also requested unrestricted access to the town office to carry out his duties of zoning administrator. S. totally explained the town amendment is operating under the guidance of the Be Smart, Stay Safe order by the governor, as well as a safety protocol determined by the Mendon Community of Operations Plan to ensure essential municipal operation continuum. Currently, S. Cosgrove has access to the town office Monday through Thursday after 5:00 PM all day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, as long as another town official is not already present in the building. These are the same restrictions as all other municipal offices, other than the town clerk and her assistant clerk. The Select Board agreed to allow S. Cosgrove to set additional office hours, one additional morning or afternoon per week. And Gondella, town clerk, will need to refrain from scheduling vault research at the same time as S. Cosgrove's office hours in order to maintain the limited occupancy of the building as per the governor's order. L. Crissell will coordinate the schedule with S. Cosgrove and N. Gondella.
I'm just asking about, you said you didn't have anything to do with zoning, but yet you voted that night to send law enforcement to my house.
No, let me read, read that again.
Oh, no, I saw what you wrote, but why'd you write you can? Why isn't it you shall? That's not right. You need to change that.
There was a issue.
There was two zoning violations that night.
Correct.
Why was I the only one served by the sheriff?
Uh, no.
Yes, I was.
There was two, the consti-
No, there was only one.
No, the constable went to two of them.
No, they didn't. It's right in the letter, right here, from Suzanne. Only one has been served by the sheriff, me, since 2012, April 12th, 2021. I'm the only person that's ever got served by a sheriff for any violations. Usually it's just a phone call, maybe, a just phone call.
It was a request from the zoning administrator to have-
No, it wasn't. No, there wasn't. There's not, show me some paperwork for that day.
Well, all he got is the minutes.
In the minutes, he didn't ask for that.
Let me read it again.
Hey, no, Steve Cosgrove didn't ask to send the sheriff. You guys voted to send the sheriff.
We had, the Select Board decided that-
Yes, the Select Board decided. You told me you didn't have anything to do with zoning.
No, this was the request.
You told me you didn't have anything to do with zoning last week.
We don't, micromanage zoning, I told you that.
What's that then?
Okay, so you're not listening to my answers.
I am listening, but you're not listening to me.
No, you're talking right back at me, you're talking over me.
You're not making any sense.
And we're not, you're not making any sense. There's a time there when, when there was a COVID-
I'm asking you.
I'm talking now, can you let me explain this to you?
Explain. Go ahead, next line.
There was a time when we had an issue with our zoning administrator was not wearing a mask. The Select Board, when we got a complaint, was filed. At that time, the Select Board said, if zoning violations are going to be issued, we want either the town constable or a deputy sheriff to go with the zoning administrator because of a complaint that was filed.
The zoning administrator never showed up, just the law showed up.
Well, then that's the law. I can't, I can't answer about the law.
So you're not making any sense. And nobody else ever got served but, but me, and I want to know why I got served.
I don't have an answer. Don't have an answer.
Obviously, I'm being singled out.
I don't think so.
Just like the gun ordinance.
Yeah, so any, do you have any other comments?
You don't think I was singled out by the gun ordinance? Phil Douglas's neighbor had a comment from Phil Douglas saying that ordinance was just for me.
Well, then-
So then Vouse told me on my property that it was just for me.
You'd have to talk to Phil Douglas, because the Select Board never mentioned your name. It was a gun ordinance brought to us by Phil Douglas.
I'm asking for the minutes.
And we, could you let me explain to you?
Well, I'm trying to explain.
No, you're talking right over me. You're talking right over me.
I am going to talk over you. I am going to talk over you, because it's public comment.
Well, then, then I'm going to call for adjournment, 10 minutes.
You just don't really want to listen to what I have to say. The meeting is over.
We have 10 minutes.
It doesn't make any sense.
We're, we're done.
Of course we're done, because you don't want to hear what I got to say. The initial letter.
We'll be back in 10 minutes.
Okay. Yeah.
You're good.
I think he answered your question.
No, he didn't. I'm asking, this was supposed to be on the agenda tonight. I asked for it a week ago. It's on that paper. I want to know the paperwork for the person that had the police come to my house that day. It was the day after I squashed the gun ordinance. It's really funny. You're trying to intimidate me, you're trying to intimidate me there. You've been trying to intimidate me with the sheriff here. I'm not going to be intimidated. You're trying to intimidate me with the disorderly-
Let him speak.
All right, we are back in session at 5:20, 5:20. There's a request on the two violations referred to in the minutes of April 12th, The first, these are from Stephen Kovturov. Again, he's deceased. First one is dated April 22nd, 2021, and it's Ryan Gates, 166 Terra Lane, Mendon, Vermont 05701, regarding seven-day notice of zoning violation, lot parcel number 030211. Dear Mr. Gates, as the owner of the above referenced property, you are here very notified that you are in alleged violation of Mending Zoning Section 402, Performance Standards for All Activities 5, provides that no glare lights or reflection shall be permitted, which are nuisance to other property owners. The violation exists as follows. There are three trees with a panel of three solar-mounted floodlights on them. The floodlights point directly into the basement windows of the adjacent house parcel. In conformance with 24 VSA 4451, you have seven days from the date of this notice to correct this violation, to remove or redirect the floodlights. Please understand that if you fail to correct this violation within seven days, a fine of, in parentheses, up to $100 may be assessed each day the violation continues. Each day the violation continues constitutes a separate offense. In default of payment of the fine, you shall be required to pay double the amount of the fine until the violation ceases. It may also be necessary to turn the matter over to the town attorney to institute, in the name of the town amendment, any action deemed appropriate by the town, such as an injunction or other proceeding to prevent, restrain, correct, or abate that construction or use, or to prevent in or about those premises, any act, conduct, business, or use constituting a violation. Such court action may be initiated in the environmental court or as appropriate before the judicial bureau as provided by 24 VSA 1974A. You should be aware that further action may be taken without the seven-day notice and opportunity to correct the violation if the violation of the bylaw or ordinance is repeated after the seven-day notice period and within the next succeeding 12 months. In accordance with 24 VSA 4465, should you disagree with this notice of violation, you may appeal to the zoning board of adjustment within 15 days of the date of this letter. A copy of the appeal must also be provided to the zoning administrator. The appeal must include the appellant's name and address, a brief description of the property with respect to which the appeal is taken, a reference to the regulatory provisions applicable to that appeal, the relief requested, and the amount, grounds for the requested relief. The appeal must also be accompanied by an appeal fee of $100. Please feel free to contact me should you have a question at, and there's a telephone number, and again, he's deceased, so that number is no longer. The second one, if you're requested.
I know all about them. I'm asking why I, why you served me? You're wasting time just reading that stuff. It's a waste.
Well, you don't need the second one?
I already, I was here. I want to know why I was served by the sheriff, and he was not.
Steve, Steve Cosgrove felt you were confrontational in that he wanted, yes, he wanted law enforcement.
None of that in his, none of that.
There is.
That was you.
No.
You voted on that. You, Larry, and Samuel Fox and Val.
There was a complaint filed against Steve.
How could that be? I hadn't had any, any problems with Steve. No, that was just my name.
We did, well, it came-
No, they called, you went over there eight times.
It came to the Select Board. And so at the Select Board-
Sounds like I was singled out, right, Larry?
He had a complaint filed by, by Doug Hughes. And so at that point, we said, you're not going-
I want to see the paperwork for it all. Yeah, how I was, how, why you needed the sheriff to go to my house.
It was, yeah, we wanted, because of COVID-19 and the fact that we had a complaint, the Select Board decided, if you're going to go serve a violation, you need to take somebody with you, so that we know there's a second for-
He didn't come, he didn't show up. That's what I'm telling you. You just sent the law.
Yeah, I don't know, then if, if Steve-
You voted for it in, in the last meeting.
If Steve went to, if Steve, if Steve didn't serve, then he put it in the hands of, of whoever he sent it, sent the violation with. He can do that.
So we need to change that to we shall or eliminate it, because that just makes it so you can pick and choose, so you feel like-
It's, it's up to the zoning administrator. If the zoning administrator feels-
No, you, you voted on that.
This was in COVID-19 because we needed-
That's the Select Board voting on that on April 12th.
We're done here, right? I can't answer your questions, you don't listen to me.
You voted on it on April 12th. Yes or no?
I, I, I read the minutes to you on April 12th.
You voted on it. I want to change that to you either shall, or you won't at all.
It, it's up to the zoning administrator.
No, it was up to you, you wrote that.
Because of COVID-19, we, we wanted someone, okay, I'm done with you. I'm done. I can't explain-
It's not even legal to say you can. You either shall or you won't.
I cannot explain anything to you.
No, because it makes you singles people out. It makes it so you can single people out.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I know Fred left, he's got the planning-
Fred's going to be talking about the other issue that's on the agenda.
Hey, thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
I'll be back. I wanted that on the agenda, let's do it next week. I want to talk about the law.
That's right.
Yeah. This is all your file, but I want to get back to my- Okay, we're good. Okay. First thing we do, access permit, 170 Terra Lane. For the record, there was a request for information from Ryan Gates about if this property at 170 Terra Lane had an access permit for their driveway. The Lister Card was pulled, and it indicates, this is for the record, the property was built in 1984. The highway specifications, specification ordinance was not adopted until 1996, therefore there was no access permit required for this. Since then, the owners of the property now have an access permit for their driveway. They have reached out to five contractors, and to my knowledge, two have replied, so that's in their hands now. So that's it, and now we are finally down to community center. We're going to have a presentation by Megan Smith, and Megan, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for having me. So as you all know, one of the big things that came out of the Mendon On The Move project in my committee about economic development was a community center, feeling like the town needed a community center for economic development and for just community, building community. So we found out that a piece of land, thanks to you all approving the cost, that piece of land is viable for building a community center that the town already owns. So Vermont Council on Rural Development gave us additional funding to have these drawings done, which you've been forwarding. As well as once, if you all agree on a spot that would be the best spot, the Vermont Council on Rural Development grant also includes them going in and figuring out wastewater, utility, all the, the next phase before we would even do anything further. That is, to no expense of the town. They did determine that, you know, we can hook up to the Alpine Pipeline, and from what they could see, and of course, they really have to get in there better, and they might ask the town to have it mowed, the exact spot where the community center would go, and just make sure there's nothing under there, because it's really, the grass is so fine now.
Yeah.
And they'd like to get it done this fall, but they may not need it mowed, but I was going to just, if that's the case, if you all would consider improving the town, going down and mowing the 50 by 100 spot that they're wanting, that, that we choose, hopefully we choose tonight. So once that's done, the next phase would be, well, so he is, he suggested I work with a company that does prefabricated buildings. It's less expensive, you don't have architects, you don't have- Less expensive, you don't have architects, you don't have anything, it's a one-stop-shop. So I found a company, ends up they have a branch in Vermont, gentleman who used to live in Mendenham, he lives over in Orwell, and they, um, so they prefabricate the buildings, bring them in, and they can, and they will or don't have to do the finishing work. So I asked him to look at this building that I had found in another community in Minnesota, do make kind of a basic drawing of what it would look like, and he, he did that, and estimates, you know, he, he said, we're gonna be close to a million dollars. He said, when I'm doing grant writing and all of that, I should, you know, fundraising, it's gonna probably be finished with plumbing and electrical and all that will probably be a million dollars. I asked if, you know, is it possible to have it so we could have solar panels, working on it as a municipal building? He said absolutely, they're doing that with all their roofs now. The engineer gave me several questions to ask, oh, if, um, permitting and all, and the answer was yes to everything. They, they're, they take part in every step, especially it being a municipal building. Um, I was very impressed with the gentleman I spoke to, but that's down the road. Um, what I wanted to ask you all to consider is two things. One of the layouts of, does allow us to share access right-of-way with the Smith property, Howard Smith's property. If you can see, there's a line that comes down that says right-of-way, and so it, it doesn't do anything to our plans at any differently than, that we would want if we were gonna someday consider giving Howard the right-of-way. Where's the building on here? So here, community center here, this is Route 4, right? Let me try to see this. And the right-of-way comes along here, and, and there's plenty of room, we still have our parking spots, but to share, we would use the same right-of-way as he would, he would have to have the 15, what is it, 15 feet, 15?
I think it's 50.
50 feet. But it's all on, it's on one of these that shows, so we would be coming in that same access, and if he did decide to develop his property, they would use that same access. Um, and again, it's nothing we have to decide, he needs to come to you guys if he, you know, he's looking for a developer now to put plans together for a 20 to 35 unit townhouse development back there, but it'd be all the way on the other end of his property, it wouldn't even be close to ours. So, I mean, I don't, that's up to him, it's just that I think knowing that it can happen, um, if that would be something the select board would have to keep in mind, I think.
So the right-of-way, I mean, if there's a right-of-way, right, it would have to be shared, we can't have, you know, two roads going in, so.
Yeah, so he said, so, but it would be the road, he said, for putting the property with backing up to Route 4, which is the way I think it should be, cause that would be backing into the woods versus kind of backing into, you know, it just looks to me like a better layout, um, he, then we would be coming in that way, and then the parking lot, that, you know, coming in and then parking the parking lot, and then for him, it would just keep going from our entrance way. Now, you know, that would be a whole nother discussion with that neighborhood, and again, that's nothing that, they have to do Act 250 and everything, it'll be years before he can develop that property, but it was a question from him, and I just said I'd have the engineers determine that, and then it would be up to the select board to approve his plans whenever he gets around to do it, if ever. But I feel like, you know, it would give some better tax base to the community, put some more kids in the school, and he doesn't wanna do affordable housing or anything, he wants to do nice townhomes. But he said his are all the way, and he said if we even needed some more parking up front on his property up front, we could, and I, it doesn't look like, it doesn't even look like we need to get the, um, the property from the Charles family. They had volunteered to donate their property, that's what, theirs is just the hill going down, and, and so.
And steep trees on it.
Yeah, and the engineers said we absolutely don't need that property. So, really, and then the next thing would be if, you know, I, I thought the next step would be sending out a survey to the town, people in the town, um, uh, what do they call those surveys done? Send out, we just fill them out real quickly, and I used them all the time when I worked for the state. Anyway, it's, we have the big email list from all the Mendenham On The Move people, and probably more than that, and just send out a survey to get feedback, you know, do you, um, these are the questions, I'll just tell, I have them here for you guys, but, you know, are you, would you want a community center? Um, if so, would you be willing for any taxpayer dollars to go towards matching grants? Cause, you know, we have to raise this with grants, we're gonna need money. Would you be, would you support a fundraising capital campaign? And then I listed out all the things that we thought, commercial kitchen for events and local businesses to use for canning and bottling, preparing food for sale, exercise class, food shelf, babysitting by local teenagers, classes, sort of meetup type classes for citizens, and then I put in here, if we do the survey, Survey Monkey, that's what it's called, please respond to me with any other thoughts on what a community center could be used for in our town.
You have a municipal bond on that too? Is that, you might have to add that.
No, okay, I have to add that too.
Yeah, cause I think in the end, you would probably have to get on that group.
And what, so how would I, so I'd be asking, oh, you mean, we'd have to raise the money for.
Well, you've, you've covered it, uh, let's see. If you're asking how the town, a question regarding supporting it with taxes, um.
Yeah, I put that like as a fifth line there, would, we would need to spend taxpayer dollars to match 5 to 10% of grants. Would you support this?
Then that, um, so you need to spend taxpayer dollars to match some of the grants, but then also, um, a municipal bond is kind of separate from that, cause there's no matching for that, that's.
So you mean, you talked about paying for it with a municipal bond, would be, people support that?
Yeah, I was asking that, yeah.
That's great, I didn't think of that, I thought it was all gonna be grant writing and fundraising.
Well, if you're talking a million dollars, that's a tall order, yeah. But what, but that's why you're asking them, you know, for tax support and, um.
So what I, my thought was that, and I just, is that we would, I work with Nancy or Sarah to get this, you know, email and do this Survey Monkey, get responses from people to the community, to see if they support it, and then if they do, ask that some money be put in the budget for the next two years probably for matching funds for grants. And then, um, the capital campaign.
And there could be ARPA money too.
And then ARPA money, also the ARPA money, and I didn't know if I had to formally make a request for ARPA money.
Um, we'll consider the request at this point, cause there's still two or three out there, we're still waiting to hear from.
Cause if we, say we raise half a million of it with grant writing and, and 7%, some are 5% match, some are 10, so let's just say 7, 7 and 1/2 percent, 500,000, so we're gonna need $40,000, so 35, $40,000 between the budget over the next few years and ARPA funds. So this is sort of a request for you to consider that in the budget, and then the other thing, so I don't know anything about municipal bonding, so that's something we, I'd have to be educated on. So all I'm asking for now, I guess, is permission to send out the survey and to go ahead and have the rest of the work done that's being paid for by, um, the other organization, but that didn't match for, for you all.
So your, your survey, how much information, I mean, can you get out there on that?
Well, it's, you send it out, and it's so easy, it's just people just, you say, please, can you take a minute to respond to these five questions? And then we'll get a sense of.
Yeah, this is a start.
How people feel, and then we can, and then I'm saying, for more comments, send them to me directly, just to try to keep the work out of the office. And then I can just bring, print all those, or, you know, email all those responses that I get, and then I'll just have a sense of what the town wants. I mean, Sarah, it was one of, um, Sarah and Nancy said to me, do we know how the town really feels? Well, I know how my committee feels, and I know how.
We never do.
Yeah, but I think we have to be, the only thing I'm not certain about is, the other way we could do it is send it out on a postcard that says, go online and take this survey and have it on the website. That way we know we would reach all the residents versus the, not only the ones we have email addresses for. I just don't know how much of the town we have email addresses for.
It's a difficult town to get a read on, um, you know, we're kind of divided by Route 4, and there's no get-togethers, and, you know, it's, it's a hard read, even for the, for the select board.
Yeah, so.
So that's a good way to find out. So you're not, go ahead.
No, so I would, I'd be happy to, you know, but I know a, a postcard would cost money, it'd cost the town money to send out, versus if I do the Survey Monkey, it's free. And Sarah, are you there?
Yes.
Do you know how, do you have any idea how much of the community we have email addresses for?
Not very much. We don't keep a list of email addresses for the town, so individual groups, um, like Mendenham On The Move, they have, um, some email addresses, but the town office does not keep, um, a list of email addresses. So we do, we can publicize your, uh, survey on the, um, different social media sites that we do use, which is our, the town website, Facebook, and Frontcourt Forum.
That's a good idea, and then I could, I do have all the emails from Mendenham On The Move, which was a lot, I mean, from the original big group, and then if we publicize it then, and it's sitting there on the website, I think that would be enough without doing a postcard.
You wanna reach out to as many, I mean, to really get a good sample of that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I could have, work with Historical Society, and I can work, but, I mean, what do you think, Sarah? Do you think it'd be beneficial to just try to do a postcard to everybody and say, to make sure they know it's there?
Um, that's, I mean, that is the way to reach everybody, it's, it's, had we missed the July mailing of the tax bills, we could have included a notice in with that. Um, the town will be doing another town like mailing, um, unless the town clerk is doing the mailing, we don't have one scheduled, and so the town report goes out, so that would be after, um, the budget.
I know that you guys appropriated a small amount of money for our, the Economic Development Fund. Would that be enough to send, cover sending out a postcard? Cause we didn't use it for anything else.
Um, yes, there is a reserve fund for Mendenham Economic Development, and I don't believe that there's a line item of the budget for Mendenham, um, Economic Development this year.
But there was money left in the reserve, but there was money left in the Reserve Fund, which is why we didn't ask for any more, cause we didn't, when we came to that meeting. So I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I'm just kind of trying to get you all, your insight into what you think. I mean, definitely a postcard, but at least for those people that are interested, could participate, and they definitely know about it.
So the postcard is gonna direct them to how to do the survey.
To the website of the survey, plus we will send the survey out to the emails we have, because it's so easy to use, it's so easy to click on it and do it.
The, the postcards, and Nancy knows just what it costs to send the postcards up, cause we've done it before for town picnics and things.
Okay.
Irene celebration, and then, yeah.
Well, why don't I have, have, find out from Nancy what that costs, and then get that to you for the next meeting? In the meantime, I'll put together the survey and have it sent to you all, and just any, and then we can discuss it again, is that good?
So on your survey, you're going to have a brief description of the project, community center, the location, and then the questions of, I mean, you're not gonna have any kind of a concept of what it might look like, that's too early for that.
I think it would be, I mean, I could put it on there, I think, I said a 50 by 100 building with 40-plus parking spots.
Yeah, yeah, cause otherwise, you know, I've been on these before where you start sending all the details in the photo, and people get really excited about it, and then you ask the hard questions about paying for it, and then all of a sudden, that excitement, so it's, this is just getting in, letting them to know that there's a community center plan.
Yeah.
And we'd like your input.
And want your input before we do anything further.
Yeah.
Beyond.
It's a good start.
Yeah, and I feel like, um, and I think we'll probably also get some other good ideas about what people use, would like to use a, a community center for, um, God, I wish I'd been babysitting while my kids were.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will have, I will talk to Nancy and have that dollar amount of what a postcard costs, and for you all to see if that's something you're willing to.
Yeah, planning for it somewhere.
The reserve budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah, is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for doing all this, this is, uh, this is what we need in Mendenham is.
I think we really need something to bring our community, and especially to attract families, and I know right now, there's no real estate for sale, but who knows, you know? Howard, um, said, you know, he was getting some negative commentary from people saying, we don't want affordable housing, and he said, you can't even do affordable housing in Mendenham, cause we don't have municipal water. I mean, that's the whole reason Killington's doing that tip, I mean, one of the reasons, so that they can get infrastructure for that.
Good point, yeah.
So what he wants to build is not, he wants, very clear, it's not affordable housing.
So, uh, just to, whoops, sorry. Getting back to the, the mowing, I know, I've been down there before, and it's, I'm gonna say I was there in the springtime, but Bill had gone down and told me, you might want me to mow it before you go down, or he had to mow it anyway, so we'll let him know that.
If you wouldn't mind, it would really help the engineers, plus if, like Val wants to go down and take a look.
Yeah, and you're just warning her the grass is so high, and two of us can't go down without warning it as a select board member or meeting.
But you and I could go down, it's really not so hard to do right now.
I found the pins, with the exception of one in the stone wall, um.
And I think, you know, it's, it's a, gonna be a deal for that community, but it's, the traffic isn't gonna be that often, you know, coming in and out of there. I mean, I think we probably still vote here, right? So it'd be town meeting.
No.
Uh, no, we vote down there, I think it's.
Pull everything down there?
We can at least have the issue time to set up that room for voting, so this would definitely be a benefit for voting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just think it's storing the voting room, I mean, it'll just, it would be just such a nice thing for the community. And Terri Corsones and I are gonna run the place, she's gonna do all the baking, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna teach all the fitness classes.
You have a plan?
Yes, we have a plan, I said I'll be 70 by, as soon as, at least 70, I might change my idea, and I might wanna do the baking.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well, Megan, thanks for all the work you've done, we appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, thanks again. Uh, ARPA timeline, that's you and me.
I did speak to Nancy, and we haven't received any paper requests anymore.
Do you have that original one that Nancy did? She compiled, you know, like, digitization of the land records, and I misplaced mine, I can get her just to print out another one.
No, I have her list of, um, it wasn't a specific ARPA for now. It was her court report from the last meeting.
Oh, it's quite a while ago, um.
Mr. Karen.
Oh, her ARPA requests, her personal ARPA.
Hey, your camera's on, so you know.
Arthur, sorry, my, also our planning commission meeting here. I was interested in item number four about this scolding study, are you at that point in that, Jennifer?
Well, we're doing ARPA right now, we're probably five minutes.
Can you throw a spitball up or something, and I'll come down so I can?
Uh, sure, yeah.
I don't have her request.
Yeah, I think both of us are gonna need it, cause it was, that was the long list, that we need to move forward on that. So. So just so that, to give you an update, we have $302,214.22 of ARPA funds in our account. They've told us from day one to move slowly and, let's see. All right, so we have to basically spend this money by December 31st, 2024. So it's not some kind of a rush, but we know there's some things that we may agree on that we can move forward with. Once we compile the rest, everything I get, I'll send to you and then we'll just start talking about it. If there's things we agree on. And then the checks have to be issued by the end of 2026. So we've, we've got time, but, um, the $302,000 and change, sounds like a lot of money, but we have more requests now than we have money, so it's going to be up to us. We got another request, I'm still waiting from, um, Outer Creek Communication Union District and the Men and Recreation Committee on their, uh, the playground set, so. Just looking at our timeline, uh, we'll put this on the agenda for next meeting, to get started on it. By that time, we'll have a folder of everything up to date on it.
Nancy and I have a meeting when she comes back from vacation, so we'll have more information also.
Okay, good. Uh, so we get started on this and again, it's not a rush, but it's, we, we should set a timeline because if we're going into our budget cycle, probably our second meeting in October and that's going to take up most of our time until, uh, December. Now, it's on, just, just on some like quick notes and not the one I'm looking for, but I think Nancy told us the, uh, digitization of land records, which is really be a good project, but that's $30,000 to $50,000 right there, so. I mean, we, we could put this entire amount of our ARPA funds into one road project that's, it's unfunded, there's no funding for it. So it's, you know, it kind of, you look for things that are going to spread out and help the majority of people in town as far as reducing their taxes, but, um, we have, again, several requests. Again, yeah, the funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024 and expended by December 31st, 2026. All right, so we'll get that list together. And now we're down to D, Route Four scoping, and Fred Bagley wants to, um, talk to us about that. And we have a contract to sign. I haven't buried it, it's right here. We'll make a motion to do this. And I think Stephanie Burke from Rutland Regional Planning Commission is looking to even get this started or at least get a committee together sometime this month. Let me see if I can get Fred. Excuse me. It's the only reason I went up.
I've never seen her come.
Has eaten us cookies? That's the only reason Fred's on the planning commission.
Hi Fred.
Cookies. Enjoy our meeting so far, Fred?
I looked, I also looked at the one online from two weeks ago. I watched the last 12 minutes of that parola.
Yep, it was. So moving forward, we have a, actually what the agenda item is, is, um, to sign the contract with Rutland Regional Planning Commission and one of the, you have two pages to sign. One of the emails, I think Stephanie was even, Stephanie Burke, from RRPC was interested in starting this month, getting a committee together and things like that, so.
And we're already working with Stephanie. She's our liaison for the Hazard Mitigation Committee as well, so. She knows the town well, she knows a bunch of us well. Sarah knows, Sarah's high on her. So, um, we're eager to go. And, and I think, as you know, as, as you mentioned earlier, the Hazard Mitigation Committee is just about wrapped up. We're in the, we've done all the info we need to do. It's now just that timeline format of 20 days here, 30 days there, you have to approve, et cetera. Sarah, that goes to Vermont Project Management in early December, so it's, um, it's virtually done. It's Stephanie and we can now-
I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting under announcements that, um, you know, we have a meeting tomorrow, local hazard mitigation at 2:30.
Yep.
And that most likely is the last meeting of our, our team and then it's, yeah.
And then it's just these various timelines that kick in, so we're done by early December.
Right, your planning commission will hold the hearing, that'll be the second public hearing and then, then it comes to the select board, then it goes to the state and then in January FEMA.
Yes, and Sarah emphasized that the rules change in January 1st or something, some new federal rules, so.
That's why it has to be in, yeah.
That's why you want to get it in in December.
Yeah.
And, um, our planning, uh, commission chair upstairs just read the same thing in her minutes about the schedule of the, of the process of going through planning commission and then the, uh-
One of the interesting things when we went through this, looking at even our surrounding communities, when they came with their top three, uh, what they figured hazards.
Yeah.
A couple towns had drought in there as one of the top hazards, so that was interesting, so.
Yeah, we, we were a little different than our-
Well, yeah, I thi, I think the team members just have that remembrance of Tropical Storm Irene and, and we keep going back to that and, and, you know, Stephanie kind of pulled the reins in and said, "We're going back five years," you know, but we can't help it, having gone through that. That's, that's, that's the worst case scenario, so. So, yeah, we're going to be signing the contract and, um-
Then, then as I understand it, Stephanie at RRPC serves as the, uh, the solicitor for getting environmental engineering groups and highway engineering groups and, and, and people who want to respond to the RFP. And hopefully that can be a fairly expedited process so that, I would hope from a Men in the Move standpoint, within 60 days, we're going up and down Route Four with somebody who selected. You guys select the engineering company, you're the ones who make the final decision.
Okay.
You know, based on, I assume her input and some input from the MO. Then you have to form a subcommittee to review all the applicants and whatnot, so it's a process.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot to this. And it looks like, you know, it goes up till, um, 2024. That's how long this, yeah.
Yes, good.
I actually read through this. It's a lot, but, um, most of it's just standard. So, yeah, this is, um, you know, something we'll really look forward to and, and I, it looks like a really energetic group that's lined up for this one, to help with this one.
I'm excited about the possibilities of what we can accomplish.
Probably the select board will look at this a different ways. One of them is certainly safety, um, you know, the junction of Meadow Lake Drive, Journeys End, Woodward Road and Old Turnpike, if any, if there's any turning lanes are possible. I mean, the scoping study covers everything.
Yeah, and, and the way, the way we envisioned it and then the way the state stated why we got it, it had to do with bike safety and pedestrian safety, less intersection safety or lighting and that sort of thing. But I, I don't know why we wouldn't expand it to everything that we think the town needs for safety on Route Four. Speed limits, aesthetics, signage, the whole thing.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think, I suspect we're going to get a lot of latitude as to, you know, what we want from the consulting scoping engineers.
So just, the committee, of course, hasn't been formed yet, but I think there's already a list of names out there that are interested in starting right off, so. Yeah, and of course, you and I have experience with Stephanie Burke through the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and we know she's going to be getting things done and moving things along, so that's, uh, she'll be great. Look forward to working with her again. Sorry, yeah, that's, that's her update. We're just right now signing the contract and-
I just came to witness the signing of the contract.
Yeah.
Witnessing King Charles signing the papers.
Uh, all right, I'll make a motion to sign the Route Four scoping project contract with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for municipal project management. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Here we go.
So we can informally notify Stephanie tomorrow that it's been signed?
I'll be forwarding her, I'll give the contract tomorrow.
Yeah, good.
That's provided I sign the second page. That, done, contract signed.
Thank you, and again, thanks to the select board for agreeing all these things once ago to have the town, the town's portion. I think they went a long way to convincing the state that that was over the, that we're in town to be evaluated.
And we have to thank you for, and everyone that's gone so far on this project to get this going and bringing it.
We haven't, we haven't accomplished anything yet, but-
We haven't, but-
We're underway.
This is Men in, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Fred. Back to your meeting. All right. She actually said those are for us, so, and we can't leave until they're, they're gone. All right, we have, uh, under business, we're down to E, which is the VCJC. That's Vermont Criminal Justice, the Constable Duties and Responsibilities. And this is for our Constable, uh, Limi Carter. It's requires my signature. The second page does not need to be signed because that's change of duty. Um, so under duties and responsibilities, we have a list. That's another one I want to throw at you. You've got that one, but, um, we've been advised to look at, into hybrid meetings. Nothing we're going to work on tonight. I wanted to go over the, what our duties are. I can find out what I did wrong. You don't happen to have that with you? It's basically, uh-
I have a handwritten version.
That will work. Well, they're here.
Larry, do you want to be a resumé?
Yeah, I got so much paperwork here that-
Thanks, Sarah.
So that, so-
For interrupting, but, um-
Thank you for interrupting.
... responsibilities are to destroy unlicensed dogs, kill injured deer, remove disorderly people from town meetings, collect taxes if no tax law certain collective, assist health officer and carry out deserved duties. Those are the statutory requirements of the constable if they're not operating under, um, law enforcement certification.
Right, and based on those duties of the constable, that's why we have budgeted $1,500.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and so that, the second one, if we change anything, um, there's a notification form should we change any of those duties. So the first one has to be filled out and signed by me and sent in, so, um, based on the duties that I have to fill in, summary of duties and responsibilities of your constable, so I will fill those in, I'll make a motion that, um, the duties that Sarah just read, that, that's what we approve. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then, um, I'll finish filling this out and put it in your box. And, yeah? Vermont Town Forest Fire Warden, who is, first, our fire warden is Seth Bridge. And this has to be signed by both of us, so I'll make a motion to assign, uh, appoint Seth Bridge as Vermont Town Forest Fire Warden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, Larry, can I just clarify that motion? Is there a term ending on that or an appointment for so long?
Uh, thank you, Sarah. Uh, it's a term to commence on July 1st, 2021 and terminate on June 30th, 2026. Or until I resign or am removed for causes. So that's, those are the dates. That confuse things or?
No, it's not. You know, just to clarify, the town has Men in the Board, I'll have to look back at the appointment forms, but, um, they knew their appointment of the fire warden, um, at their second meeting in March after town meeting. It's included in the appointment. Um, and the statement has different appointing schedules. So this, what you just appointed will be updated on the appointment, um, notice that goes into the town report on the term endings for each of the positions.
Yeah.
That'll be updated for the fire warden. Um, I don't have it in front of me what the previous appointment term ending was. But that's, that's the difference, is the state is asking you for-
This is the state asking you. It's paperwork from the state, correct?
Yeah, for, for your term. Yeah, for, for your term. So I did just look at information, Seth was appointed by the select board until 2023, so the appointment overlaps that appointment, so that term ending will be updated to June 30th, 2026.
And, um, we just pulled out some information that showed Val, and she has a copy of this at home, uh, for us to do some research in between now and our next meeting, um, regarding hybrid meetings in the AWOL Pro. So we'll, we'll do our homework and look into this, and that'll be, uh, an agenda item. It looks like initially, for the whole setup and the software required, it was $1,000. Um, it's, it is recommended we do a hybrid meeting, and then $240 annually after that. So that'll, so Sarah, that'll be on our agenda at the next meeting? Okay. I think we have covered everything, except finishing the cookies. Um, Mary, anything else from you, or if you'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:13.
Okay, uh, Val has made a motion to adjourn at 6:13. I second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.